First we'll have the call to order, invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Chris Smith. Will you please rise?
Goodness pray. Holy Father, we thank you for another day that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Father God, that you gave us rest on last night. We thank you for those who are here today. We pray for them, we pray for this city, we pray for this state, we pray for this nation. We pray, oh Father God, that we do the things that bring glory and honor to your name. For Lord, you're worthy of all praise and glory. We pray for direction for the people of this city, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Broke off.
Mr. Montgomery, absent. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record, and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion, with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you're asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council-appointed Sergeant Arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
Okay, counsel, I'd like to approve the minute of the November 2nd meeting.
So moved.
Second. Audience got any questions about this? Counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Coming up, counsel?
There it goes.
Motion carries. Counsel, we have one addition request to the agenda by Mr. Darby. It'll be number six under unfinished business, adopt a resolution permanently closing Union Pacific Railway, located at Old Shed Road, City of Bossier, and authorize Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said closing. Final reading, and we got a letter from U.P. today on that, so... Motion, if y'all want to add that to back to the agenda.
Motion for add that to our agendas today?
I'll second that.
Who made the motion?
That's all, who made the motion?
Say again?
Who made the motion?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, I'll make the motion.
I thought you were making it.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Mr. Williams, second.
Any questions from the audience today? On this, Adam?
John Settle, 1915 Citizens Bank Drive. Is this to be voted on today, the resolution?
Yes.
I think that's a violation of the Open Meetings law because it wasn't posted on your agenda. And the Open Meetings law is set up to allow people to have plenty, notice at least 24 hours before any determinative action. So, for the record, I will file an objection that this is improper as a violation of the Open Meetings law. And if it's passed, there will probably be further action on this. Thank you.
You asking my opinion?
Yes, or just?
The amendment is allowed to be amended, the amendment is allowed to be amended by unanimous vote of the council. That is clear, that's rules, that is, that are the, it follows all the state statutes, it follows all of our rules and regulations of the meetings. I do not think it is a violation of the Open Meetings law.
Thank you, Charles. Any other questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
And we're voting just to put it back on the agenda?
Just to put it back on the agenda, yes. Motion carries.
Phyllis, any ceremonial matters?
I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended, please.
I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second. Counsel?
Hold on just a second. Okay, who made that motion? Scott?
I'll second it.
Okay, now it's ready.
Counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Unfinished business.
Adopting ordinance amending the 2022 operating budgets to include a 2% raise for non-civil service. City employees not entitled to state mandated raises, and this is final reading, and it was as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience about this? And just to clarify, this is for the, just the city employees, not the fire, police? Because they get that 2% every year. There are some records clerks in the police department that doesn't get the 2%, so they're included in this also. Any questions? Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing the City of Bossier City to charge an additional fee for all payments made by electronic means. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
And this is something we talked about a couple weeks ago also. Any questions from the audience? Come on, sir.
Good afternoon, Kerry Chandler, 2924 Heather Lane, Bossier City. Which, the electronic means, I wasn't here for that meeting when y'all discussed it, and which, I know there's a couple of options to pay, to pay fees and stuff, but I don't know which options you're talking about.
These are credit card fees that the credit card company charges us or any other place that uses credit cards. So we're just going to charge that back to the customer.
Oh, like the 3% or whatever it is? Okay.
Yeah, we're losing several hundred thousand dollars a year doing that, so it's hard to lose.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, real quick, the, one, who is our merchant services provider? Do we know?
Who is it? Heartland.
Heartland. And do they charge, on the credit cards, do they charge a percentage or is it a flat rate?
I don't know this.
Honestly, I think it's just a flat rate.
It's a flat rate that they charge?
It might be like a certain, a flat rate per charge, and then on top of that, a percentage.
Okay. I was just, I guess, because I know the credit card company that I use at my personal business, they use a percentage, and so MasterCard's a different fee, Discover. I didn't know if maybe we can make that, those fees public so people, when this is implemented, are aware of what's going to be charged on top of their water fee? And make sure that we educate that if they use the electronic transfer, that there's going to be no charge.
Yeah, I think most of them are 4%, but I know some of them do differ.
I know on my machine in my store, that somebody comes in there, want to pay the bill and stuff, they charge them automatically.
Right.
Everything's, it could be like $3.50, it could be $10, but every bill's different.
Okay.
But they won't lose no money.
All right, and I, and I just want to make sure that we're just passing this fee off, we're not making a profit.
No, no. We're just recouping our money. Oh, is that something you can get an answer for before we get done today?
Exactly.
Yes, if that's, yeah. Does everybody, I know we have several different apartments that use that, do they all use the same thing? Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to appropriate $14,550 to perform a drainage study for max value and related improvements within the preserved Phase II residential development to come from the Riverboat Capital Projects Fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, any questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to declare the completion of the Water Main Abandonment Project by ASB Utility Construction LLC at a total project cost of $410,643.25, including change order number one, in the amount of $33,319.50, and to amend ordinance number three of 2020, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement the Walter O. Big B Carriage Way Fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Your second.
Somebody had.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance adding Civic Center supervision to the job duty of the Executive Assistant Carol King Anderson, increasing the salary by $18,000 for the increased job responsibilities. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience?
I'm Amy Dennis, 1724 Allison Avenue, Bossier, 71112. There were a few things said at the November 2nd council meeting. As far, I'm Fred Dennis's wife, for those of you who didn't get that. It was stated that the three guys over there left unannounced. They did not, I just wanted to come here and make that clear. My husband gave his resignation October 21st, and he worked through October 29th, as did Taylor and Morgan. It was also said that it was going to become a better place, and maybe we can start getting some people in there. What a slap in the face to my husband, who worked here for 22 years. 22 years. I don't know what I'm allowed to say and what I'm not allowed to say. I had a few things that I'd like to point out, you can stop me if need be.
Just don't attack anybody's character and...
I will not attack anybody's character.
And just speak to me and not any other person.
I'm curious if anyone was aware that Fred and Taylor were the only employees at the Civic Center up until just a few months ago, when Morgan was hired. I'm also curious if anyone was aware there had been 50 events from January to October this year. One would think you wouldn't be inconsiderate making comments as if the Civic Center wasn't doing business, all the while having two guys stretched extremely thin with absolutely no incentive. Is anyone aware that as Acting Interim Executive Director of the Bossier Civic Center, Fred did not supervise, he fulfilled the roles and responsibilities of the Administrative Division, the Operations Division, and the Catering Division? Were you aware that Fred worked weekends, evenings, shopped for and ran concessions, helped set up for events, worked events, helped clean up after events? I could go on. These are all things that the previous directors did not have to do, nor were they expected to do. Fred began his career here with the Civic Center in 2001. He became Operations Manager in 2016, when our good friend John Golden passed. And when his opportunity for the Executive Director position became available in April 2019, he found out by reading the agenda that the city was going to attempt to outsource the Civic Center, and that Pam Glorioso, Bossier C.A.O. at the time, was to be put in charge of it. With almost 21 years invested with the City of Bossier, immediately becoming uncertain, and with no discussion or guidance regarding the future of the Civic Center or what to expect moving forward, Fred, on his own accord and without hesitation, spent the next year managing and running the Civic Center without missing a beat and without an ounce of recognition or compensation. In March of 2020, Fred was finally appointed Interim Executive Director and was to be reevaluated in a year to take over the position permanently.
Ms. Dennis, let me say that you're tying your three minutes to self, I should have told you you had three minutes.
That's fine.
I have a lot of things I could say too, but I'll keep that to myself also. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Maggio.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution permanently closing Union Pacific Railway, located at Old Shed Road, City of Bossier, and authorize Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute any and all documents necessary to affect said closing. Final reading?
So moved.
Second. Like Ms. McGraw said at the beginning, we got a letter from U.P. this morning. And there's been a lot of talk about this, so I talked to some of the council members, we're going to have Ms. McGraw read it, if you don't mind, Phyllis.
Of course. It's dated November 16th, 2021, it's on Union Pacific letterhead, and it's addressed to Mayor Chandler. After a recent meeting between Union Pacific's representative rail pros and Bossier City, it was brought to the attention of Union Pacific Railroad that the city has no intention of closing Shed Road as part of their Parkway North overpass project, and that the Bossier City wishes for Shed Road to remain open. In order to progress this change in project scope, Union Pacific requires the city to execute a preliminary engineering agreement and perform a diagnostic to review the impacts of the proposal to Union Pacific Operations and Property. In our experience, a typical project of this type can take from 16 to 36 months from proposal to completion. Part of this timeline would include the city gaining the approvals of the city's initial design from the Union Pacific, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, the local levee or water district, and any other stakeholders. Comments or directives from stakeholders could greatly influence the proposed layout and design of your proposed project. Any changes to design during the railroad review process will only result in further delay as redesigns, and new diagnostics may be required as a result of any changes. During the above described review process, Union Pacific would be unable to issue any necessary construction easements and/or permits allowing work to continue in its right of way due to concerns that any ongoing planned work would likely be subject to change or redesign due to the nature of any approved plan or design. Union Pacific concurs with the industry concerning, concerns regarding roundabouts within a distance near enough to create concerns of queuing and impacts to the at-grade crossing due to potential, to increased risk to the roadway users and the railroad. Union Pacific shall not approve a roundabout on or near its property due to these safety and operational concerns. Should Bossier City agree to close the at-grade crossing at completion of the project, the city and the Union Pacific would be in a better position to execute the overpass agreement in a more expeditious manner, which would allow for the city to apply for the necessary right-of-entry permits to begin work. It is the position of Union Pacific that the permanent closure of the at-grade crossing at Shed Road would address any and all safety concerns potentially caused by the project. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter, and it was signed by Eric Lewis, Manager of Industry and Public Projects with Union Pacific.
Thank you, Phyllis. Mayor, council, y'all have any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I appreciate we having gunned this correspondent from the Union Pacific, but I wanted to ask the attorney to do a brief summation of the letter so that we can be clear on what has been compromised and what has been agreed upon.
Well, I think the letter, we've heard it now from the proverbial horse's mouth. I know that I myself, the mayor, various members of the city council have been in meetings, talks, you know, extensively with Union Pacific, Bruce Easterly, who's involved in the project, the city engineer, and other personnel. Union Pacific has stated that they have now just become aware, they have never been notified, now have just recently become aware that the Old Shed Road at-grade crossing, there were plans to have that remain open. They were unaware of that. Therefore, that caused them great concerns for the safety, basically safety concerns as stated in the letter. Therefore, now becoming aware of that, they want to basically engage in a study and, you know, do their due diligence with all the federal safety regulatory agencies, things of that nature, to look at, you know, and address the concerns, sort of evaluate the concerns of keeping that at-grade crossing open. And they're stating that this process takes anywhere from 16 to 36 months, from start to finish. They have also further said now, when they were presented with this plan, that it includes a roundabout close to the at-grade crossing. I think that statement is exceedingly clear. They're not going to approve any plan that includes any roundabout close to their railroad tracks. They said it, you know, they just said it's not a good idea, it causes safety concerns, you know, backup, traffic, things of that nature, so on and so forth. Therefore, before we could, they could even begin their evaluation, their 16, 16 to 36 month process, the city would have to resubmit, you know, plans, you know, to whatever they want to, you know, to keep this crossing open, and, you know, and the traffic controls and things and that nature. So, before they could even begin that, then all this would have to be redesigned. That's more cost to the city, it's more money to the city, and it's more time to the city. Basically, if we get rid of the roundabout, we agree to close the at-grade crossing. Upon completion of the project, it would stay open until the Walter O. Big B Carriage Way is finished. We agree to close that crossing and get rid of the roundabout, then they're saying that we may proceed with the project. At this point, they are saying that if we want to consider that crossing staying open, we have to change our plans, we have to submit those for evaluation and review, and during that process, there will be no work done within their right of way. As you know, we're under contract with our contractor, J.B. James. I think the last phase of the contract is somewhere in the nature of $34 million and change. And we have time completion, you know, deadlines and things in that contract. If J.B. James is delayed due to this project basically being put on hold from anywhere from 18 months or a year and a half to three years, then we're going to be liable to J.B. James for whatever cost overruns, increased cost in materials, things of that nature, that would certainly occur during that time period. So, however, Union Pacific has basically stated that if you agree to close the crossing, you agree to get rid of the roundabout, there won't be, we won't have any problems with giving you the necessary construction easements and whatever needed permits are necessary to complete this project. So a decision has to be made, and that's, and that decision is, of course, has to be made by the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. I did have a couple of things I wanted to ask Ben about the Union Pacific. In the letter, it states there is easements and/or permits, and then it has the wording "overpass agreement." So is the overpass agreement and the construction easement the same? Are those the same, or are we talking about two different components here?
I'm trying to pick up where you're specifically referencing, Councilman Darby, but there are multiple, there's a permit, and then there are a couple of agreements. Those agreements include what they call a construction management agreement and a contractor's right-of-entry agreement. Those two documents, we secure upon securing a contractor to go to work out there. We've been working on that for a while, and this is the result of that.
Okay, so that's more than one permit that we have to secure?
We have a permit to go over the railroad. We do not currently have a permit to make any alterations to their at-grade crossing there on Shed Road.
Okay, and when it comes to the overpass, that's an agreement or a permit?
Both.
It's both, and we don't have that, right?
We have the permit, we don't have the agreements.
Okay, all right.
So we currently don't have authorization from the railroad to gain access to their right of way to construct the project.
Okay, so therefore, if this council decide to approve the closure, what we will get in turn is the agreement and the permits?
You'll get the agreements, we have the permit, but we will get the agreement to work within their right of way to perform the project.
But there's more than one permit, right?
There's one permit to go over the railroad, but we don't intend to do anything at Shed Road at that crossing, so...
Okay, so we won't need any more permits after this?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right. Would we need any more agreements after this?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that was, that was one thing, I wasn't real clear about that. But I am clear that U.P. will not allow the city design to go forth with the roundabouts, and I think I'm clear that except the city decide to permanently close the crossing, then we have to go through that long drawn-out process of 16 to 36 months of due diligence on the part of U.P. So I am clear about that. Thank you.
I'd just like to piggyback a little bit. I agree with Mr. Darby, I'm clear on what Union Pacific's demands are to move this project forward. I'm not particularly happy with it, but it is what it is. I do think that a mistake was made somewhere, and I'm not here to litigate and debate who made that mistake and who didn't. I have a pretty clear understanding of who I think it is, but a mistake was made somewhere, and I think that as a, as a city, as a council, and administration, we need to work to make sure that future projects, we don't find ourselves where we at today because I don't want to get in the habit of having to close a railroad crossing just to get a project complete because our city's built around the railroad, so... I just, I just want to make sure that going forward that we're diligent with, whether it's contractors, whether it's within the city, that we are dotting every i and crossing every t moving forward.
Anyone else, counsel?
Ben, you know, we was in that meeting with the mayor last week with U.P., and, you know, ain't no way we can beat the railroad. I mean, I mean, really. I tried everything, Washington and all, but I begged him, if we close this crossing, we get the overpass built, that you will do something with the trains, with the time sitting on those tracks for us, north and south Bossier. I mean, he looked at me, he goes, I can work on that. But the last couple of weeks, the trains been two 40, two 60 cars, 55 minutes, an hour and 22 minutes on the tracks crossing Shed, East Texas, and Barksdale. I said, if we can't do this, please help us with the time on our peak hours in Bossier City. Will he put the trains through early in the morning, late at night? Our just, our peak hours, just cut less train traffic? He said he would help us on that.
Yeah, in the first meeting, he talked about moving, you know, they have stop signs too, moving their stop signs back, you know.
too, moving their stop signs back, you know, uh, to not, like, get to Texas Avenue and have to stop, or get to Barksdale Boulevard and have to stop.
Yeah.
Stop them further out. So, I mean, he was, he seemed pretty genuine. Uh, he's got some projects he wanted to do, go look at things like that, so, yeah.
Councilman Maggio?
Yes, sir.
Did he happen to put that in writing?
No. No, he said he, he would work on it. And then he asked me my name, number, where, where I worked and everything, but we, we, I mean, we really, I mean, I begged him for the citizens of Bojor, we need that.
Yeah.
You know, our peak hours, we need.
Did you, did you take notes, that you write it down?
I don't forget. Yeah. And he looked, I, I believe he'll help us with it, really. Me and him, we was in that meeting, Judge was there, and everybody was there with us. So I believe he'll work with us.
Yeah, okay. So he had witnesses?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Ben, any comments you'd like to make?
No, sir.
You're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Uh, any comments from the audience about this?
Can I, Mr. President, can I ask the attorney?
Sure, go ahead.
Listen, Jacob, will we get one more, uh, correspondent after this from U.P.? Because Ben, Ben talked about the agreement. So is, is that going to be something we're going to get?
Well, we, we are going to execute a construction right-of-way easement-type agreement with Union Pacific that will allow us to conduct whatever work is necessary to complete the project within their designated right-of-ways.
Okay. So have that in hand.
My name is Paul Rosini with N.T.B. Associates. Um, my office is at five-two-five Louisiana Avenue in Triforce. Uh, again, we're the engineer of record.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but each speaker has three minutes.
Sir?
Each speaker has three minutes. I just want to tell you that I failed to tell the young lady first.
Okay, no, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so my first comment, just having heard that letter really quick, like, I didn't really hear any kind of a guarantee in that letter from them, that if you make the crossing, you get your agreements. I think it said it will help for you to get your agreements. You might have somebody check the verbiage on that. But here's what I wanted to bring to your attention. Again, we're the engineer of record. The city is responsible. We work for the city. We, we love the city. We want the city to have a successful project, and if the city decides to close it, we respect the decision. But I don't think Union Pacific, the, the players involved, I've been here since the beginning, and I've got a, a memo in front of me dated six-twenty-seven of eighteen, in which Mark Hudson, the Bojor City engineer, Grant Gillian of N.T.B.A., Todd Harris of Union Pacific Railroad, and Don Clayton of T.R.C. met on the site and discussed the Shed Road crossing as it crosses the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. So I can, I can put them on the ground in 2018, knowing that we were going to deal with this crossing, and this email is, is in the public record. I don't have time to read the whole email. On November the first, 2019, Clayton Manning at Rail Pros took over the job because Todd Harris left the day before. And on that day, he got an email that was C.C. DeMark Hudson, the city engineer, Paul Rosini, Dirk Crone, Paul Michael from Donald Clayton of T.R.C., to Clayton Manning, subject being Shed Road Crossing at Union Pacific Railroad. Attachments, about six plan sheets, including the roundabout. "Mr. Manning, per Mark Hudson's request, the attached, please find copies of the roadway plans for the Shed Road at the crossing with Union Pacific tracks. Included are title sheet, plan and profile, so on and so forth. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, Don Clayton." Okay. On April eighth, uh, is when Mr. Haydel emailed us to say he was taking over the project. And we were working on the railroad. We had many meetings with the railroad. He was there, we were there. And in November of twenty, or I'm sorry, November of, of that year, I forwarded all these emails to Mr. Haydel. So for Union Pacific to tell you they had never heard of about it before is not what the facts are. And I'm just saying that. Not going to go any further with that. But for us to be in that meeting, we could have brought that up, the people that have been there all along, and we could have probably argued it a little bit with them. And I would say that, they say that they don't have roundabouts in proximity. Uh, in Eagle, Colorado, there's a roundabout that looks exactly like this over a Union Pacific track. The last thing I would add, here's a roundabout with a railroad track going right through the middle of it. The last thing I would add, I'm out of time, but.
Go ahead.
There, there are other.
Finish your point.
Well, the conversation that it's a dangerous crossing is not for real either. There's, there's twenty-five claims of accidents at that crossing. I pulled the federal railroad records on it. There's two that say Shed Road, and one of them's in nineteen-seventy-eight and the other one's in nineteen-eighty-eight. So the whole claim about a dangerous crossing doesn't, doesn't hold water either. But I think the city should delay one more time to go back to Union Pacific, maybe have the design team in the meeting so that we can say, "We were there." Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for me on that?
Mr. Rosini, what, so the discretion is the timeline and the information that were disseminated, that's, that's the issue you feel?
Well, I feel the ball was dropped, has been, has been said, and, and I think the emails show that it was in the hands of Union Pacific in twenty-eighteen. It was in the hands of Rail Pros in twenty-nineteen. And from there to now, i- is a long winding road, and we can, we can talk about that further. I feel adamantly that there's sufficient cause for Union Pacific to have to rethink their position based on the fact that his letter saying that they've never heard about it till now, it's just not true.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
If you close it, it's never coming back open. I know that.
Right.
Sir, thank you.
Thank you.
John Settle again. I'll repeat my objection, uh, to this resolution. You addressed a lengthy letter from Union Pacific that has not been made available to the public, and you're now considering a resolution that has not been made available to the public. And I think that y'all need to realize that, uh, good government allows citizens to look at resolutions before meetings, and especially a key letter that is a part of that. Now, since I sat down, I made a public records request, Ms. McGraw, to get the resolution, hopefully, I guess, after y'all acted on it, and the letter itself. But good government dictates that. And I disagree with the opinion of the council, and I will probably litigate it. But I think y'all need to start looking at the fact that you can do a better job of informing citizens ahead of time and giving citizens the right to speak. It's a new day here in Bojor, if for no other reason that the media is now coming to your meetings. The media is not going to stop coming, and the media is not going to keep, is going to, is not going to let things just be the way they were. Y'all need to be open and free with decisions. Not releasing this resolution and the letter today before you vote on it is a disgrace to each of you as elected officials, and it is a disgrace to the people who've elected you.
Mr. Settle, I don't, I don't want to argue with you. I agree with our attorney. It does say, if we want to add something to the agenda, if one person votes against it, we don't add it. And this, we just got, I don't know.
That's more the reason, that's more the reason to release it to the public, Mr. Williams.
You're going to have a copy of this before you leave?
Oh, after you voted on it. Great. Good government would have it out there with the agenda so that people could see it ahead of time, look at it, and comment on it knowingly.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I will state for the record, this was the same resolution that was on the November second, 2021 agenda.
Thank you.
What, uh, Mr. President, with all due respect, I, I do find an issue with this resolution, because we don't have the copy of the original at this meeting. Is that, is that somewhere?
The original resolution?
Yeah.
You have it on your, on your, on your computer?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's on, it's on here?
You should have it.
Okay. Cause this, this add-on doesn't reflect that. So is it more detailed in, in the other one?
Is this the same resolution that you guys had for the, um?
I don't have it on my computer.
The November second meeting?
Yeah, that's, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think we have it hard copied.
Okay.
I don't believe, because, I mean, I have the add-on.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't have the resolution.
I can give you guys copies of the resolution. This, this all came across my desk at about twelve-thirty today.
Well, well, that's, that's my concern about the resolution. It, it doesn't specify that upon completion of the project, that, that resolution that we had before, it specified that, this doesn't. This, this is very, uh, I, I don't, I don't see the details in it.
Mr. Darby, when I called you, this was, I asked you if you wanted to put the same thing.
I didn't see this.
Nope. I asked if you wanted to put the same exact thing back on that you had continued in that's, that, that same resolution. That's the.
This is all we had before?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well.
That's all it said before on, on there, and I can pull up from the November second meeting.
Okay, so.
Cause I just pulled it directly from the November second meeting.
Okay, so what I would need to do is amend this resolution to include upon the completion of the project, because it doesn't have it on here. And even last time, I don't remember not seeing that, but that's a part of the, uh, issue. You know, we, we need to make sure of that.
This is the, the fact sheet that was dated for ten-twenty-seven, and it was placed on the November second meeting. It says, "A resolution permanently closing Union Pacific Railway located at Old Shed, City of Bojor, and authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said closing."
Okay.
That's the same title, and it's the same exact, the same exact resolution. I haven't gotten any different resolution for it.
Okay, okay. All right. So, so my, my motion is to amend it, to include the verbiage that was, that would reflect on the completion of the project.
To add verbiage?
Yes.
Mr. Darby, without interrupting.
It is on our hard copy right there.
It's on the hard copy? Okay.
Mr. Darby, I, I believe the original resolution to close the at-grade crossing, I believe I drafted that, and it does specifically state at completion of the project.
It says abandoned by the City of Bojor City upon substantial completion.
Correct.
And see, it doesn't say it on here, on the add-on.
The add-on is just the title. It doesn't.
Substantial completion or completion?
It says substantial completion is what the ordinance said, I mean, the resolution says, substantial completion.
Right here, okay. Yeah, I see it on here. That's the old one. Okay.
Mr. Darby, would you like to amend this to say completion instead of substantial completion?
Yeah, if, if she's going to go with the last one that we had previously.
That's all I can go by, is what you had last time.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so to amend to, to change wording to completion and not substantial.
Mm-hmm.
I, I would like to point out, hasn't that crossing been closed for months?
It has been closed for months and months.
About eight months, yeah.
On a, you, not, of course, not on a permanent basis. There's other work going on at, at Old Shed Road.
It's open now.
It's open now?
Yeah, it's not closed now.
It's open sometimes and closed sometimes.
That is correct.
Okay. So do we get a second on that?
Mr. Smith seconded it.
Thank you, sir.
Hold on just a second. I gotta. So to amend, to change the wording to completion and not substantial completion.
Mm-hmm.
And so you'll vote on that, and then you'll vote on the item as, as amended.
So we're going to vote on the change in the wording in the resolution?
In a public comment.
Yeah. Do we have any comments on that? Counsel?
Kerry Chandler, twenty-nine twenty-four, Heathlany in Bojor. Um, concerning this whole issue, would it not be better to table this until the, everybody can figure out who's telling the truth, who's not telling the truth? Cause this gentleman has spoke, uh, recently. He has emails back from 2018 showing that the railroad really did know what was going on, and before we make an ordinance and we have to live by it, should get everybody involved and get the information correctly before we move forward to do anything?
I know that there's a lot of change over at U.P. in this last few years. I got a good friend, friend of mine retired from U.P. just a couple of years ago, and there's a lot of change over going on, management and up and down the line. I'm not saying that, believe me, I'm not saying that you're telling something not true. That's not the thing, but I'll do whatever the council wishes I do.
Okay. That's just.
Just a comment. Thank you.
Counsel, I, Mr. President, I honestly want to get this amendment to this resolution, but I honestly do not have an issue in extending this resolution, because of course, we said thirty days in the first place. So I think that's debatable if this council want to continue forward versus voting today.
Counsel, we do have another meeting on November thirtieth.
I would, I would be open to, uh, joining you, Mr. Darby, if we can, uh, maybe get some of the facts that Mr. Rosini is talking about, so we can see, you know, what Union Pacific did or didn't know. Uh, but if we're just going to extend it for two weeks and, and not do anything, um, I, I'd like to see action, but I, I would, I, I will, I will support you in this.
So, Madam Court, do, do we continue with the amendment, or do we just?
It's, it's, it's a pleasure of the council. It's whatever the council, the council wishes.
Okay.
It, it, strictly whatever the council wishes.
Uh, Ben, I hate to call you up again. Were we delaying anything by not acting today?
Uh, certainly.
If we could have a special meeting next week, get some, get some meetings going to find out, uh?
I mean, Mr. President, at the end of the day, it's the council's decision.
Yeah.
We, we don't dispute what Mr. Rosini has communicated to the council. That's all, in our opinion, very factual. We have those records in our files. I don't think that's the issue at hand today. In my opinion, I don't think that that changes U.P.'s opinion. So we can, we can delay it as long as you want, but I'm, I cannot stand here and guarantee that that's not going to have any negative impacts on the project.
Hi, Mr. Darby. You want to say your, uh?
So I will just move that we continue this item until November?
Thirtieth.
The thirtieth?
Thirty.
Chris, your second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to comment on that?
This is the continuation. It's all that they can comment on.
Yeah.
Say again?
The continuation. That's what the vote is.
Um, I just wanted to see, I don't know if I can call someone else up, but Mr. Easterly talking about the work that is going on and where they are related to the, um, at-grade crossing, and what they need in order to proceed with, um, with what they've got going in just the next few days.
I'm sorry, I didn't see Bruce out there. Bruce? I mean, if, if it's going to cause some delays, we could, like I said, we could move it up, have some meetings with Bruce or whoever.
My name is Bruce Easterly. I'm the construction manager on the project. Uh, what, what was your question?
With where y'all are in relation to the project needing the, the right-of-way access with the.
Within two weeks. I'm, I'm being told that the, uh, contractor is, has enough room and area and guidance enough where to, to keep, continue laying his culverts and his drainage facilities for two weeks. After that, they're going to move off the project.
Any questions for Mr. Easterly?
Mr. Easterly, on that project, if we delay it longer, will it cost the city money?
We can lay, you delay it one day, it can cost the city money. I'm not saying it will, I'm just saying it can.
Like the contract we have signed now, like a million, two million?
They're coming up Shed Road with the drainage, uh?
Well, we don't know what's going to happen to Shed Road, guys.
I know.
I mean, if I, if we, if we say we're going to do, if we're going to close the crossing and get rid of the roundabout, then that changes the whole drainage pattern of, of the drainage facilities going in there. That's, and they're two weeks away from getting there.
Mm-hmm.
That's where we're at.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So, um, my feelings on this have gone back and forth. Uh, but, Mr. Easterly, I appreciate your, your comments, and, uh, I'm going to be voting that we do not delay this. We, we have a letter from U.P. saying that they want this crossing closed. I think there's, uh, some questions. I think there's, um, some questions about documentation in the past, but that current letter, to me, is the most important piece of information. Uh, and the fact that the clock is ticking, uh, on the project now, and that delays may cost the city dollars. So I, I'll be voting that we don't, that, that we don't delay this.
He, he said the, the smartest thing, I think, which said that, uh, we're taking out the roundabout is going to delay where they're putting drainage at. Was that not true? That's, that's what you said, though, so, right? Since we've got to take that roundabout out, roundabout and redesign right there?
When you take the roundabout out, there's going to be some redesign on the, uh, on, on the whole roadway through that area. The drainage will have to be configured to take care of that new pathway that the, that the roadway takes.
That's it, yeah. Thank you, Bruce.
You know, make myself clear, I don't, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Alright, guys, uh.
So this is a motion to continue?
This is a motion to continue till November thirtieth. Any questions? Alright, counsel, please cast your vote.
That's not it.
No? There it goes.
Motion carries to continue to November thirtieth.
Mr. President, may I request the city clerk to research the alleged violation that Mr. Settle mentioned and bring that back to our attention?
I have it right here, Mr. Darby.
Okay.
It's, if you'd like to hear it, revised statute forty-two nineteen. And, and this was, this was some literature from the legislative auditor revised on nine twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. "To add items to an agenda at the meeting itself, the open meetings law requires unanimous approval of the members present to add an item to the agenda. In no case may a public body, by ordinance, charter, provision, or policy lessen this requirement to a majority vote." That's an Attorney General's opinion fifteen point, fifteen dash zero one twenty-two. "Any motion for a vote to add an item to the agenda shall include, with reasonable specificity, the subject matter of the additional agenda item. Public comment on the motion must be allowed prior to any vote to add an item to the agenda."
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we're ready to move on, thank God. Uh, new business.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing the sale of a two thousand two E-one heavy rescue truck for fifty thousand dollars to the northeast Bossier Fire District number five, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to declare the completion of the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Utility Relocation at Green Acres Office Park Project by Don Behren Contractor, Inc. at a total project cost of four hundred thirty-eight thousand, forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents, including deductive change order number one in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred, twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents, and to amend ordinance twenty-five of twenty twenty-one, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Contingency Fund, first reading.
So move. Second. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to declare the completion of the forty-two inch water main extension project by S&amp;J Construction Company, Inc., ASB Utility Construction LLC, at a total project cost of five million, four hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and nine cents, including change order number one in the amount of four hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred, twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents, and to amend ordinance fifty-seven of twenty nineteen, leaving a surplus of funding in the twenty nineteen LDH loan, first reading.
So move.
Mr. Irwin, do you second?
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Williams, did yours not pop up? It shows. That motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve report of change order number one for the citywide street rehabilitation phase two with an additional sixty days and an increase of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for a total contract of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police communications officer for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? From the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an accounts clerk, three, due to a promotion from within the sales tax department, first and final reading.
A move, second move.
Any questions from the audience? From the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an operations manager for the Bossier Civic Center due to resignation, first and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? From the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve twenty twenty-two Bossier City Council meeting schedule.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, did you look it over, everybody alright with it? Alright, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing Bossier City herein referred to governmental unit to join with the state of Louisiana and other local governmental units as a participant in the Louisiana State Local Government opioid litigation memorandum of understanding and any subsequent form agreements necessary to implement the memorandum of understanding, including but not limited to the subdivision settlement participation forms in exhibit K of the distributor settlement agreement and the Janson settlement agreement, first and final reading.
So move. Second. Charles, uh, you have anything you want to say about that?
There is, uh, that is the opioid ongoing class action litigation, the, uh, Purdue Pharma and others. Um, it's been well documented in the press, um, you know, uh, certain, um, uh, statements, guarantees, things of that nature were made concerning the addictive, or the non-addictive nature of the drug, OxyContin primarily. Um, and it, due to that, due to now that what's been shown overwhelmingly false statements by pharmaceutical companies concerning the addictive nature of the drug, there is, um, multi-billion dollar litigation. You know, and, and what this is, is the state in its various political subdivisions, due to the problems that they've had to deal with caused by opioid addiction. It, it provides that i- if the matter is settled or there's an eventual jury verdict, Bossier City would be entitled to a portion of the money designated to the state of Louisiana to be used for various, um, remediation-type purposes, uh, police expenditures, counseling, if, if the city so wished to, um, you know, drug treatment, things of that nature.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Before we move into our reports, young lady, are y'all here from a school or organization or?
I'm looking for Bossier Youth Leadership.
Bossier Youth Leadership, would you like to come and stand up and introduce yourselves?
Way to put on one.
I'm Bryon and Colleen, I go to Parkway High School.
I'm James Ross, I go to Irland High School.
I'm Addison Swett, I go to Irland High School.
My name's Jennifer Robinson, I go to Irland.
I'm Heather Perry, we go to Irland.
Miss, uh, you want to stand up and say your name, where you from? Yes, ma'am. You're the boss.
I'm just the mom.
Okay. Well, we appreciate, appreciate y'all coming and hope you don't, hope you have questions you can ask us when it's over with, though. Thank you for coming. Alright, uh, city engineer, the monthly project report.
Good afternoon, counsel. Let's do a quick run-through for month of November. Back over a hundred forty million dollars worth of ongoing construction or design projects, with a hundred and thirty-two being under actual construction. Ten are in the designer bid phase, twenty under construction. And we've had about three, three or four more subdivisions that are coming down the pipe. Coleman Street, you can see they're cutting soil cement, getting ready to come all the way down and finish off that project. Spoke to DOT yesterday, they did have some delays hitting some utilities in the area near Bossier High School. So they've had some, some short delays, and they're still holding that they're going to be finished in their thirty-four working days.
In the rain, we had a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, the rain, we had a big rain that pushed them back just a little bit. Tinsley Ballpark, uh, this is the entrance into the new part of the facility. They're at ninety-six percent complete, ninety-seven percent of their time has elapsed. And we do have a walkthrough scheduled for Thursday, uh, if y'all are interested. Had a couple additional pictures taken, if you hadn't had a chance to get over there. That top picture is actually from the second story of the concession building. Bottom left is actually inside a scoring booth. Bottom right is your ADA field that has the rubberized track surface. And then just a couple additional pictures, just showing how the projects were getting to the finish line, we're there. LTRI Building, they're a little behind on that, had a couple material delays, a couple rain days. You can see a pond's holding water right there, uh, sitting at fifty-four percent complete, sixty-nine percent of their time has elapsed. East Paint Fire Station, we've got structural steel that's gone up. They're a little behind schedule, but they're rocking and rolling out there. Got some more submittals in, working to get those back as quickly as we can. Clifford Almond Park or Swan Lake Restrooms, uh, got the nice roof design coming together. The piece of red steel you see come up, that's the architectural accents, they'll have the baseball on the end. And they're, they're coming along, they're at eighty-four percent complete with ninety-nine percent of their time, but they do have some rain days coming. South Bossier redevelopment project, these are the sidewalks and beautification efforts down in South Bossier. They're sitting at about nine percent complete, twenty-three percent of their time elapsed. They did hit a couple of rains, some material delays for some light electrical stuff, so they'll, they'll be catching back up. Uh, sidewalks and streets, uh, we wrapped up in Benoist Circle a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we've got just a couple of dress-up islands in there, also finished up on Edgemont, Mayfair, I believe, North Park. And then we're doing some additional areas in District, I believe it's District One, and a couple additional in District Two as well, trying to address some issues. Private development, you can see we, our list got a little bit longer. Believe bottom left there is, uh, Village Tiburon number fifteen, and top left is your estates down at the Preserve. These guys are taking advantage of all the dry weather that we've had up until that one big nice rain, trying to beat the rainy season coming. Our projects that we got out in the bid are in the design phase. Uh, the lighting for phase two, we have now submitted those plans to DOTD for DOTD permitting. Also, we have sent it down to FPNC for their final approval. Once we have those permits in hand and FPNC approval, we can go up to bid for those projects, for that project. Uh, early stages for the turn lanes, uh, down Seventy-One South. And then we're also still working on the drainage improvements at Tinsley, Bardo, and Elm Grove as well. And City Hall Parking, I believe they've done the geotechnical work and surveying. You should see a survey crew out here sometime this week or early next week. Some honorable mentions, uh, Urban Systems, the traffic signal study, they are still collecting data. They've now moved to their, I believe, their second phase of collecting that data now that all the traffic has normalized. Uh, we're also still coordinating with the police jury and DOTD. They bid that project out, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. They're waiting on final permitting from DOTD before they award that contract. And then they'll, you'll start seeing some, uh, them tear up the world over there at I-220 and LA-3. And then we're also still working with the, uh, traffic signalization software upgrade. We're working with the, one of the software companies to potentially write a grant to try to help us get some additional funding to ensure that we can capture all the lights inside the city.
Stay right there for a minute. Yes, sir. Guys, I don't know, I sent a big, long email out, I'm sure you didn't read it because it was so long. You know, they're doing this AT&T fiber optic cable stuff in neighborhoods. And, uh, they left my neighborhood, my district, you know, like, looking like crap, okay? Dirt everywhere, I had a big pile of dirt, like, six, seven foot long, just killed all my grass. But if you're having a problem, or anybody out there having a problem, call your councilman, call Rodney or Clinton, and they're going in and they're going to take care of what's supposed to be done as they was through with your neighborhood. So I just wanted to mention that. Appreciate y'all coming out there looking.
No, please let us know, that way we can hold their feet to the fire, make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to. When they tell us, they're going to do it.
Thank you, friend.
What time is the walkthrough for the Tinsley on Thursday?
I believe it's originally scheduled for ten AM, but don't hold me to that. I believe they're trying to maybe move it to the afternoon, I will get you a firm time. Anything else? Thank y'all.
Hey, Clay, could you hang around after the meeting?
Yes, sir.
No, Clay. Thank you. Alright, next was the, uh, Molly. Financial reports.
Good afternoon, counsel.
Molly to the wolves.
You have before you the financials for the month ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. The first page is the revenue report, we are currently running a hundred and twenty-one percent to budget. Sales tax is doing well, up from ten point one percent compared to October of twenty twenty. EMS is notably down, if you're comparing it from October this year to October last year, they received an ambulance alliance payment in twenty twenty in October, and they did not for this month of this year. Page two is the expense report, we are currently running about six percent under budget. As previously mentioned with the revenue, the EMS expenses are going to offset the ambulance payment as well. Uh, the alternative fuel stations are noticeably over budget, but so is the revenue. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. As I previously mentioned, sales tax is up ten point one percent compared to October of twenty twenty. Page four is the manning report, the total number of employees as of October thirty-first is six hundred and fifty-seven, which was the same as September. This is thirty-seven employees below the budgeted number for twenty twenty-one of six hundred and ninety-four. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service is a hundred and twenty-seven percent compared to October of twenty twenty. Current year-to-date net operating income after debt service is eighty-seven percent, which is a thirteen percent decrease. And on a rolling twelve-month basis, the net operating income after debt service is seventy-eight percent of the prior twelve-year period, we're down twenty-two percent. Any questions?
Did you happen to get that, uh, percent on the credit card machine?
I'm gonna go back up there and talk with Ms. Williamson, she said she would be in after jury duty today.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, will she be back?
She has jury duty today, so I'm not sure when she'll be back.
Yeah, okay.
She said she was going to try to come in after, so I'm gonna get with her and see exactly what the, if, and I'll get, um, you and Mr. Smith emailed.
If not, she'll sure, for sure be in in the morning because she comes in before she goes to jury duty.
Okay, thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Mayor, uh, I think you wanted to say something?
Yes, sir, thank you, President Williams.
Yes, sir.
You know, all our workers from Bossier City do a great job. But right now, I want to brag about our public works, guys. And I want to thank Wade Rich, about two months, about two Sundays. And I want to thank Wade Rich. Uh, about two month, about two Sundays ago, uh, we wanted to start out about seven o'clock in the morning. He had, he, he got a caravan to work to clean the inside, well, we was going to start, try to clean all shoulders of I-20. We started on the inside lane about eight forty that morning in front of Boomtown, and we started going toward Airline. We picked up over nineteen tons of junk on just that inside shoulder. And what, what was good, he had, he had some workers out there. I want to brag on some, uh, uh, some people that were volunteers, like, uh, well, this Lynn Bryan would keep Bossier beautiful. She was there. But Ken Lowry and his wife Elizabeth and their two children were helping. Uh, Dennis, Jim McCormick was there, Scott Smith, uh, our, our substitute chief, Estes was there. We, we, we kind of picked up on, up in front of Airline, in front of, uh, Strong's and stuff. But those guys made, it was so beautiful just to see that one inside lane look. I know the other ones don't look good, but we had to get off. The traffic started getting so heavy and we had to get off. But we're going to take, you know, one little, little bite at a time, and I want to thank Wade for all he's done. He has the sweepers working out there daily, so you're going to start seeing more and more of the streets being cleaned. I believe in Kerbikville. It makes the city look better. It makes the citizens more, more happy with the city. And I do want to thank Wade and all his workers. I really appreciate it, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mayor, I do want to thank you. I saw the street sweepers on I-22 of them.
Yes, sir.
Back to back.
Yes.
I've never seen that before. I, I am so pleased. I, I have spoken with the state about cleaning and, and prior years, spoken with the administration to get it cleaned, just couldn't get it done. And you're getting it done, and I want you to know, uh, how much I appreciate it. I got phone calls from people saying, "Thank you so much for cleaning the shoulder of I-20." It, it was a disgrace and an embarrassment to cars that, that pass through the interstate to see. And once it was clean, now, a- as you drive through a- and pass Bossier City, you can see, uh, the stark contrast between an uncleaned shoulder and a clean shoulder. And, uh, I, it, it's just a, a great job. I want to thank Wade, and, and it really has cleaned up the place that, that we live. It makes, makes me proud to live in Bossier City. So thank you.
Just thanks, Scott. We got another street sweeper new and coming in next month.
Next month, yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Let's keep it up. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else, guys? Evening, everyone.